This one's it?
No.
No, isn't it?
Not until the seventeen.
Seventeen. That came late and then I didn't get a chance to read Allison's.
Do you want to call me?
Oh, yeah, you got it right. So, call them. Name the order.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Strictly budget.
Oh, well, some of the topics applied to the budget though, obviously. The insurance permission that we got today.
Yep.
And that was, and then the land use admin support email. Let me see here. I didn't get the second response, so.
You have proms email, the explanation kind of what is applied to the planning board from Sarah.
Well, yeah. So, do we want to start with that topic? Because we have the topics.
Do we have a list of the topics, of things, open items?
Yep. I sent email last night. It was late, I think.
No, I got it.
It was, well, not too late, it's not very early. All right, so insurance.
I was in there last night, too.
Right, insurance. So, we got news that it's down, what, eight point one percent? But I have to go through the numbers to kind of see what that means for the next budget year. If you guys can hear us okay online, can somebody just raise their hand? Just to make sure you can hear us.
Is it my online?
Oh, we got a thumbs up? Okay, we're good. Yes. So, I have to go through and, you know, look at that email and see what it means in the closed budget. But I didn't have time during the day today, so.
No, I know.
And then the other, so the land use admin support. So, the question that I posed was, let me just run this up. So, I noticed that that line item went from, on average, about fifteen hundred dollars a year to almost seven thousand. So, I wanted to know what the basis was behind that. And so, we reached out to, Chuck provided some information, but he said it was all, I think he said it was all non-public. Did you guys see that response? So, we don't really know what the basis was for that decision. And it looks like it's another one of those positions without a job description. So, we don't have any information about why there was such a significant change. So, I'm going to propose that we leave that line as it is, same as last year, until we can open up that black box.
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
Sixteen sixteen.
I asked Sarah, because she said that whatever she gets paid, the fees cover. So, it isn't like the town is.
Stop saying.
What?
Offset me.
Yes.
That's fine, but it still doesn't explain the increase. So, we need to understand what the increase was.
But I do know the zoning board has been busy, much busier than previously.
So, I do have some detail about revenue there, so we have to date on that. So... So, revenue to date. Let's see here. Well, the promises, you'd be guessing if we knew which line that came out of. Because I'm guessing it comes out of building permits. Um, I think that, let me see here. Oh, wait a minute, got it. So, occupancy permits. Planning and zoning, so. Or is something, we'll have to get an update on this, because. Planning fees. Last year, so planning fees in twenty nineteen. And planning and zoning fees in twenty nineteen looked like they were about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And I'm rounding here. Planning and zoning fees in twenty twenty look like they're about eleven thousand. And then, planning and zoning fees this year, and this is only through July, are fifty-two hundred. So, we'll need to get some updated numbers on this, because, you know, there's several months out of date there. Do you want me to try to project?
That's right.
So, you can see these, well, the revenue statements that I gave you guys should, you should have, well, if you brought them, they should show that as well. Because I couldn't get them all out. So, I can try to get updated numbers from Chuck on revenue to date. You know, we want to, you know, obviously consider that, we want to understand it and consider it, but. So, if I look back at seventeen and eighteen. They were, in seventeen, they were twenty-five hundred for planning. Let me do the total, so in twenty seventeen actuals, it looks like there's about thirty-two hundred. And then in eighteen, it looks like it's about seventy-one hundred. And then the other numbers you had, so.
Yep.
So, it's down. It's about, almost half of what last year's was, but we don't have the latest numbers either. You can see it here, if you guys can see that.
I'm surprised that it's not up.
Can you guys see that? Some people haven't seen, what, for that.
So, all of the other things, sit here.
No, it's okay.
You're going to get it quick in your mouth.
Yeah, but. All right.
So, I'll get updated numbers for that, as a matter of interest. So, I propose we leave this as it was appropriated last year.
Yep, I want to do that.
Just because we don't really have any background information on how it went. So, you can see in, so it used to be. Oh, you definitely have to look at that one. If you look at the end of Q three one. Which, do you have that file on? Actually, you want to? So, if you look at, that's this year's budget. But if you look at, so, planning and zoning here, it used to be. It used to be two separate line items. Are we going to say now? No, this isn't the one that's looking. I'm sorry, you know what? That doesn't, I want you to.
Okay, no, it's all right.
This is, it doesn't show in this one. It shows an annual report. In the annual report, you'll see that it used to be split into two.
No, I know when they split it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because you were on the board.
Yeah.
And so, oh, well, do you remember that conversation?
Yeah, no, not completely.
Okay. All right. But anyways, it used to be two line items.
Here's Caroline's idea, something about Sarah Fine doing that, so I kind of split the rules. So, I mean.
Yeah, so in twenty nineteen, it was appropriated fifteen hundred and sixty dollars. And then in twenty twenty, it was appropriated at almost sixteen hundred dollars. And then in twenty twenty-one, they combined those two lines together and increased it to sixty-nine hundred and seventeen dollars. So, so I think, just because we don't really understand all the background information on it.
Would Chuck have that information?
He'd, it was non-public.
I mean, does he have her files, several?
Potentially, but I can ask him.
When would that was non-public?
So, I feel like we need to get some more background information on this, but for now, I'll just leave it as is.
Yeah, okay, I'm talking to them.
All right. So, the other thing we have, all right, this might be a bigger subject, the highway and transfer station funding. So. We received Ed's proposal for funding. For increases. Based on, let me just bring it up here. It's based on what we came up with for, all right, so thirty-nine zero ninety-three. So, again, this number I came up with by giving them back what they were allocated here or appropriated here. And then adding a fourth person and then five percent on top of that. So, that came out to thirty-nine zero ninety-three. So, Ed came up with a plan to work within that number.
Yeah, he comes up with thirty-nine three twelve.
Do you want to talk about that proposal, Jack?
Yeah, he was limited to three people rather than having a part-time fourth person. And allocate that funding out across the three people.
Did you see this?
At fifteen fifty and sixteen and a quarter, I think he's making the same.
I didn't see this. Did he want, so he doesn't want the fourth person for Saturday, the one extra person for Saturday?
He'd rather have the money for the people, because he doesn't think it's better.
That's fair.
It's better. And so, he said, let's go with the three people for now and do that.
Okay.
Which is a hundred dollar funding amount. Which I'm okay with, but.
My, so my other, well, actually, so, I'm fine with that.
Let's talk about this for now, just the whole highway thing. I mean, we're, and I need a little bit of help here, too. I met with these guys and we're sending out job descriptions. I mean, we're sending out ads right now, we're going to do ads. Looking for one of two things. Either someone to backfill Ed, could be the assistant highway person in the transfer station. Or a transfer station facility person. We're looking to see what we get back from resumes. And then we're going to figure out what we're going to do with those. Figure out which direction we want to frame this and make it work.
Right.
The other thing I think we can do, if we choose to, we talked about having a facilities manager here. I think we can throw that onto George. And basically, almost like it'd be a public service, like let him have the highways, let him have the transfer station, and let him maintain this building. I don't know whether that makes sense or not.
So.
With the allocate, with them having the assistant there.
Okay. So. Are we expecting that he would be paid out of the facilities position?
No, no, he wouldn't get paid for this, it would just be added into their expense stream.
Okay.
And that, at some point, could offset if they, the Saturday person, they wanted. Because we allocated funds, we've allocated funds, we're assist facilities manager, the winter. Now, I don't know whether that works or it doesn't work. I'm waiting to see the resume, I mean, the resumes that come back to us. And I think we can look at what the job is and see who the candidates are.
So, are you suggesting then we use?
For now, I would go with a thirty-nine three twelve.
Yep.
Leave Ed's in there the way it is, leave George's in there the way it is, and run with it.
And so, are you thinking, are you thinking that at some point, the money that we have set aside for a facilities director would actually go back into maybe the transfer station?
It could go back into the transfer station for that part-time person.
Which it's, I think it's allocated at, not ninety-two, is it forty-six?
I don't know, it's eighty-six hundred, but it could be.
It's not a lot of money.
It's like ninety-two.
I mean, if you spread it out over the time.
I think it was like forty-six something.
It wasn't a lot, I don't know. I don't know until we get resumes back, we just don't know.
So, it's this.
Right now, I think we really have to get loggers.
Ninety-three sixty.
We're really down. Like, we have one besides George.
Okay. So, ninety-three sixty annual.
That's got to be our primary thing right now, I think.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying from a funding, there might be some way to move it around afterwards.
Yeah.
I'm just saying right now, leave it the way it is. And we'll get there.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or?
For now.
I think it makes sense for now.
I mean, I just, we don't know if we don't know. I mean, we don't know who's going to come in.
Right.
Or who's going to fill the openings of what we have. I mean, we're four days into it.
Well, the other concern I have, so, so is Ed paid at a full-time salary here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is that enough funding for the potentially new person? Is this, is this just one person?
It's one person.
Okay. So, I don't, what is, what is Ed at now?
He's at eighteen something now, but at forty thousand now.
What?
He's only part, how many hours do you have?
He's, yeah.
He's not forty now.
No. I thought he was.
Yes. Oh, I have it, actually.
I'd go say he's like.
He's full-time.
I thought he was full-time.
Yes, he is.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure he is.
It's just he splits his time between transfer and highway.
I don't have it, okay. I'll have to look. So, that, I'm guessing this full-time line is only really Ed.
That's Ed, the full-time line is Ed.
Okay. So, I guess he's full-time, he's full-time. So, do we feel like that's enough funding for?
I think we might have to take it from nineteen to maybe twenty-one dollars.
Okay, so that's not really enough, then.
But I just, I don't know. Because we don't have anybody coming in here.
What do you think George's position's going to be?
I'd say George.
He's still highway, right?
George has highway.
Yeah.
He brings this, he had like one candidate, and I said, well, we got to get one of one candidate. You know, and I said, and who would be the assistant? He'd still be in charge of like stormwater or someone with stormwater. He'd have the transfer station and we'd add in the facilities here. Because the facilities here is not a big job. As it in, beats it up.
So, there must be somebody else in this line, because if I just take forty-four three eighty-three and divide by twenty-eighty, which is.
But he gets overtime too, right?
Oh, okay.
He gets overtime.
All right. Because it comes out to like twenty-one and change.
Yeah, I think, what we propose, I think, takes him to nineteen something, right? And he was at eighteen something.
And is he getting overtime because of plowing?
Yes.
But wouldn't that come out of seasonal, out of this line here?
I'm talking to the wrong person, I don't know. And then he had three weeks, four weeks.
Okay. Well, you have quite a bit of information for that.
All right, five weeks, it seems like a year.
So, if you, so I would say that if we thought that.
I'm saying it's a ball that we don't, we haven't straightened it out yet.
What if you made this position a salary position? Because then you end up, it ends up being a twenty-two dollar an hour position. Twenty-two forty.
It could, but I really think it depends on the candidate that we bring in.
Yep.
And if we make it a salary thing, does it go to the point that they don't get paid for plowing?
Well, like George.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is someone going to come in for that and be plowing all night? I don't know.
Right.
I mean, that's the challenge. If you didn't have the plowing, you wouldn't have the issue.
So, do we, I guess my concern is, do we have enough funding between the full-time staff and the winter line? To hire a transfer station person, manager? Do we have to bump that up?
Bump it up two dollars. So, what's that for now?
Well, see, the problem is, there's overtime in there. If there's overtime in there, we don't know.
Right, that's.
So, are you saying to twenty dollars an hour?
I think it's going to be twenty, it's going to be twenty-one. I know the one guy that was talking to them was looking for like twenty-four. I said, well, we can't do twenty-four, I mean, that's.
So, that's forty-three six eighty.
Yeah.
With no overtime. So, where we have it now, there's a little bit of overtime in there.
Right.
And you could always, if you had to, if you had to pull overtime out of this line, you could probably use that as well. The winter staff line.
Let me ask you another question, this is out of ignorance, too. Putting ads in like fosters and doing stuff, where does that money come from?
I think, we probably have advertising in the exact.
Two hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's an advertising line. This year, it is way under expended, how lucky are we?
How much is it?
We got five twenty-five left in it as of thirty.
I don't know what an ad costs, I've got no idea, or any of it.
Okay. Well, we would use that line.
I mean, it's something we have to do.
Yep. I think we need to use some online tools as well.
Yes.
Who's the owner?
Uh, well, Gary. Mr. Gary, George. Yeah, Mike Dione does some plowing for him.
I thought Mike Spiny did, too.
Spiny is saying he will, when he has three time.
Paul from Transfer.
Excuse me?
Paul from Transfer also does plowing.
Ames, Ames?
The one that's downstairs.
Oh, no, that's other Paul. Okay. Marcel.
I don't know, there's two Pauls, so I'm confused. The one that's been there longest.
Yeah, and I think they need to get somebody with a CDL, too.
Yep, yes.
If they don't.
Well, they need somebody to drive the big truck.
Right.
So, because as I understand it, the only people driving the big truck is George.
Right.
And Ed.
Right.
So.
So, that position that's going to, obviously needs to be a CDL, that's obvious.
Yes.
CD.
It's going to have to be.
And most of those truck drivers make pretty good money.
Yes.
Yeah, let's figure that out.
They're linked to like twenty-two bucks an hour.
Yeah, this is not an easy role, but it sounds easy, but it's, no.
All right, so I guess there's a few decisions here. One, do we, so Jack's proposal to leave this as is, well, actually, pull up just a little, is it thirty-nine three twelve, is it?
Yes.
That is all, thirty-nine three twelve. Go to Jack.
Yes, thirty-nine three twelve.
All right. And then, but that's basically, so they're giving up the fourth person for increases for the existing people. Which, maybe we can get a volunteer.
Anyone?
For Saturday. Nobody wants to volunteer anymore.
There's a lady from the, you want to look in the mirror?
All right, so I'm fine with that, although I think at some point, we're going to end up having the discussion of the fourth person. But they went this, they went this whole year with only three, so maybe, maybe it won't happen. I think.
I think, yeah, if they get through the next couple of months, I think the big thing right now, as I said, is we got to get plow drivers. That's, if we get a storm, I mean, last year, or the year before, we had a storm at this time. What do we do?
The big thing is the plow driver, and then, the other thing is when the spring comes, we got to be sure we have someone that can maintain the roads. And I noticed, like, this big storm that we just had, you know, a lot of the roads, I drove around Sunday. Sunday morning early, a lot of roads are flooded because of like, you know, some roads maybe got ditched and some of the pipes need to be cleaned out. That's just general road maintenance. When that gets neglected for a few years, then it starts screwing up the tar and roads start coming up, so it's kind of like.
I thought they said they were in pretty good shape.
It's kind of like prevented maintenance.
I thought they had said they were in pretty good shape. I don't know whether they are or they're not.
So, so Jack's other proposal about a road agent. So, basically, you're suggesting that Ed would continue doing what he's doing and take on the responsibilities of facilities manager.
George.
George.
Yep. And then the transfer station, new transfer station person would do transfer station assistant road and stormwater.
Depending on the person, I mean, one of the people they're looking at. I think has a background. If he doesn't, it's George's job, period. I told him that.
Is he okay with that?
Huh?
Is he okay with that?
Yeah. I mean, it, right now, it's up in the air until I, I think we look at the candidates.
Yep. Okay, so I think that's a different decision. Did you ask them something?
Yeah, I think you should consider paying more for plow drivers.
I don't know what we pay.
Twenty dollars an hour.
Okay.
And I think they get like twenty-five anyway, everywhere else.
But how, so, I guess my question is, is how do we, we have to figure out how we pay them out of this line, then. Are they paid as their regular hourly, or are they paid like a weekly? So, we do have to figure that out. I can ask Chuck about that.
Yeah, I wonder how that works for someone who. But George just plows out of his salary. How does it work for someone?
He's a salary.
How, how does it work for someone like spending, because he just got, he must get a flat hourly rate, because he's not working overtime. He's not working forty hours plus.
Right, he's getting an hourly rate.
You know, a normal, excuse me, a normal plow guy who's working, say, Dover. You know, he might be doing sixty hours, you know, because they pay those guys. And then, after his forty hours, he's getting time and a half or sixty. But these guys aren't getting time and a half, because it's not, you know, a forty-hour work week for them.
You're right.
Except for, yeah.
Except for, well, whoever will be, yeah.
So, yeah, we need to figure that out, because how do you, unless you create a separate rate for them, you know, increasing their regular rate.
But I think, I need to say, I mean, it could be one of those numbers where they don't need it, but.
Right.
We might want to think about at least level funding or anything possibly going to stay at high, just because.
I think we should go higher.
Yeah, find out, I think we can find, we got plenty of time, I think we should find out a few questions, like.
Yeah.
How applaud drivers, I'll look into that.
Okay, if you maybe can get Chuck and figure out how we pay them out of this line, Jack?
Yeah.
The winter staff line, that would be good. Okay. Because, let's see, they're over expended in nineteen, twenty.
Every year, probably.
Imagine if this last, I imagine if this last weekend was cold and it was snowed, that a rain fell, we covered.
I guess the fire department had like thirteen calls.
Because of floods?
Because of the floods.
Houses or basements?
Mostly basements.
So, they were.
I know, I got thirteen, but I went up to two of them, probably.
I thought the, the police on Sunday morning, he's sending a call over Church Street for one, flood of basement.
Yeah.
So, they've been over expended in that line every year since seventeen? In.
By how much?
About thirteen, no. Oh, no, actually, this one's really, seventeen is really bad.
I think you were down a truck by that time.
They were over expended by almost sixty-seven hundred dollars in twenty-seventeen. They allocated twenty-two nine forty-seven, and it was almost thirty thousand that year. And then the next, in eighteen, it was about. And then the next, in eighteen, it was about, mm, two thousand over. Um, nineteen, it was about thirteen hundred over. Last year, it was, um, almost twenty-five hundred over. So it's, it's always.
What's this allocated for this year?
What's that?
What's it allocated for this year?
Um, this year is, um, I, it's level funded right now.
That wasn't known of.
No, it's not, I'm sorry. We did a five percent on that, but I don't know that that's really.
Well, good.
I think we probably need to at least do a couple thousand.
Yeah.
Um, based on the, the history from the last couple of years. So, yeah, last year was over by twenty-five hundred, the year before was about two thousand, no, sorry, thirteen hundred. And the year before it was a couple thousand. So I think we probably need to, um, increase this, um, by a couple thousand.
I think so.
Maybe we should have a little bit of storm by now.
Okay, um, so that, that's kind of, that's where we are with, um, are we good with?
Can, can I, again, this is more advice than anything, on the advertising thing, is there somebody that can give me guidance on how we do that? I mean, who we go to, what we do?
We just need to, um.
I mean, are there organizations with together for this?
Um, you can, but the state.
State?
In H and A, but, in H and A, but it was, um, I think it was Caroline that would just, you're talking about running the ad for Fosters, right?
Yeah, and doing the Fosters and other, I'm sure there's other things we do besides that, besides Facebook and that. You know, and, and I know that Caroline used to do that.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, is there somebody that can give me guidance, because I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sure.
If we call for the job description, um, you know, we could use something like Simply Hire or Indeed.
Yeah, I saw, I, I thought of those.
But I would say we probably, I don't know, I think Ports and Peril might be better than Fosters, um, but just a wider distribution.
It's all the same, Secos Media.
It is, but I feel like if you wanna target different areas, you get different people, you know, getting Ports and Peril than you would Fosters. Um, do you have, or do we have a final job description? I know that Ed.
We, Ed's, Ed's, we're, Ed's doing two of them right now.
Okay, good, alright.
Over the next two days.
Okay.
I met with him this morning.
Good.
I was just trying, I was just, I was trying to rack a brain, what else is a good advertising?
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I mean.
So one of the things that, um, Ed brought to the table, and I think it's important that we have in this position, um, is computer skills. Um, you know, Ed, Ed also has budgeting skills, which would be nice to have, but.
No, we, we, you have to have that.
Basic budgeting skills.
It's in that, it, that's in the job description.
Okay, great.
That's, that was number one.
Good, okay. Alright, um, so are we good, are we good with transportation? And so what I did was I increased, um, the highway by a couple thousand dollars more. Is that enough? Do we feel like that's enough?
Why don't you leave it there, because we still gotta have a week or so, and let me talk to those guys some more.
Do you know we can increase it to two grand, cause the history shows.
Yeah, yeah, let me.
Okay, we'll leave it for now.
Yeah, let, let me talk to them and get us a, I think we've.
Highlight it anyway.
Yeah, highlight it.
So, so don't increase it at all?
I, I don't know.
I'm okay with leaving it to what we see has been over expended for a couple, the last four years.
Right.
And then potentially even more after we talk to them.
Yeah, let me get a handle on that.
Okay. So there's that, and then, um, so transportation highway, transportation salaries, we did that, recreation director. So, I, I think we kind of got somewhat of a sense, um, from the budget committee when we met with them. About concerns around this being another COVID year and not really having the interest that we would hope to have next year. For a, an expanded rec program. I think we need to wait another year. I think we can work on the plan. I think we can certainly get with Celia, and I saw Kelly Anderson, um.
I don't disagree with her, because it really isn't a real solid plan going with COVID anyway.
Right.
Um, but there were a few emails I came through from people that I, you know, it is important to try to like, you know.
Move it forward.
Whichever number was it, the email was, it talks about maintaining rules and this and that, but you know, part of the taxes too is to have a little extra. Particularly like having services like that, so I don't think you reach a cell for it, I agree. I mean.
Well, I mean, I think we struggled to find out how.
I think that was Joe's email.
Was it Joe? Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, it was. Joe, actually, his, his email, I mean, his email, I don't think caught up on him, he redid his email again. He gave a really good explanation about the budget, so I was able to read that.
Not yet. It's on my list first.
Good, and I gotta reread it.
And actually, all he's saying is go off of the actuals last year, like what we talked about in the.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
So you're going off the actuals, not going off what, what the forecast is.
Okay.
Yeah, what you're doing, sort of, anyway, but, um, his, his email is just saying, you know, we do have to have some money available to do with.
Right.
Something besides just roads and buildings and stuff like that, which.
Yeah.
Which would be forecasting for twenty-twenty, jeez, it would be twenty-twenty-three now, the rec director?
Um, yes, right.
And then, you know, again, I can't stress enough that if we, hopefully, ever get out of this damn COVID bubble, that we get more community support, but people doing that.
You know, I think that's, that's the key.
Well, I think, um, and I told Kelly Anderson this the other night when I ran into her, that it would be, I asked her if she would be, she didn't get my email for some reason, but asked her if she would be willing to volunteer sometime to help put the plan together. Um, so I need to re-forward her that email, but I also kind of talked to her.
What did she say?
Um, she didn't seem disinterested.
Speaking of that, you definitely get emails from me. Like, did you get a couple emails from me today? Cause I send emails over my phone and it says it stays a draft.
I don't think I got them.
I don't know.
Yeah, I gotta check that.
I think you should check them before I came in.
Right, I'll check that too.
Um, so she didn't express disinterest. I, I told her I felt like it was a bigger effort than just Celia. You know, I feel like it needs to be more collaborative with the school as well, and she did speak a little bit about how, um, the school is really locked down. Um, they really, um, it's gonna, she feels that they would take an employee of the town to open that door. But I think, I think we can certainly start having conversations over the next year with them and try to get them on board with.
So they probably won't be basketball in the winter, right?
No.
I, I would, so.
But, you know, we, they're, Marshwood, you have to think about the school that we are partnered with, and they have programs as well. You know, so we really have to think about how we use their services, um, until, or if, until we can get a program.
I agree with that.
And, you know, it's, it's actually great too, because these kids will interact with kids they're gonna be in school with eventually.
You're talking to the wrong voice.
I'm preaching to the choir. Um, you know, if you think about that, think about it from that aspect. You know, if these kids were actually participating in the Marshwood Recreation Program, these are kids that are gonna end up in school eventually anyways, so.
So, going slightly off tangent for a second, when is the next school board budget meeting?
They are presenting December eighth, I think. To the budget committee.
So, until December eighth, or?
To the budget committee, yeah. Um, we do have kind of a number from them. The last time we met, Aaron, with the budget committee, Aaron Kavanagh gave us a, a preview on that. So we have a little bit of information about that. It was.
Download.
Oh, actually, no, I think that was a quarterly.
The budget, the, school board's having a budget workshop on, um, the fourth, at five-thirty.
November, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
Okay.
And then they're gonna have another one.
Okay.
The following.
Is that gonna be recorded, Nancy, do you know, cause I can't make that meeting? Yes, okay, great, okay.
Sure.
So, I, I propose we leave the skating rink. Um, the budget committee didn't seem to reverse to that. Um, they did wanna know a little bit more about that cost though, um, cause they asked.
Is there, is a budget in?
Leave it in there, um, because it's already.
In lieu of everything else, because it's outside and open.
Do you have a feeling about that?
Well, I mean, I think it's a great idea to have a skating rink, I just don't know if it was, who's gonna man it, if it was a hundred percent.
Well, we need to know what that cost is for. Is it materials, is it labor, maintenance?
It's for, um.
It's a fabricated bracket.
Yeah, it's like a fabricated.
Oh, it's pre-fanned?
Yeah, it's like something that you.
Okay. What's wrong with the one we have?
It got destroyed.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
It got left out.
It was Sean and Tia's.
It was what?
It never belonged to the town.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, no, I, I don't, are they ready? Are you talking next year or this coming winter?
I don't know when, I mean.
Cause I don't know if they're ready to, I think, wanna purchase it and set it up and volunteers and then.
Well, it'd have to be after, after the first of the calendar year.
And then there was, you know, the question was, I'm not trying to be devil's advocate, but the question was, what do you do with it every year?
That is a question.
Does it stay, or how do you maintain it?
No, we have to roll it out, put it around something.
In jail.
Okay.
Again, I'm not opposing it, I'm just saying that we, we need to sort of, before we finalize, I think we should just have maybe one, a few questions for the rec departments. See, we need to see if they're ready to do this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think their plan was, their plan was to set it up on the ball field.
That's right.
And I'm pretty sure they got permission from almost positive, they got permission from, cause they have Dr. Markucci, cause that's part of the cemetery. And pretty sure they got permission for that, so that's one check in the box.
Okay. Alright, I can send the email to Celia.
Again, I don't think I'm, I'm, I suppose, I just, I just came to make sure that we're ready for it.
Right, cause we don't want.
And I think if we can do some kind of recreation for the town for winter, but one step forward.
That's what I'm saying, it's an offset and it's outside and.
Um, this one, but you make a good point, you know, as long as it isn't outside and get ruined like the last one.
Dave, Dave, Dave was, I gotta say Jacob, but I'm not exactly sure if that's how you're gonna say that, but Dave was a very involved guy and he did some research. And he's very thorough.
Oh, Jasko.
Yeah.
Uh, he, he might be on.
I'd go to say sixteen, nine hundred is over.
He might be on here.
He's very thorough on that. He did research and he knows what he's, he's getting into.
Um, he is on his meeting, um, so if you wanted to, um, get any feedback from him. Uh, we can open it up to him.
Why don't we do it?
Okay.
Let's find out.
Dave, um, do you wanna speak to us a little bit about the skating rink, if you have any information? We can't hear you, but, let's see, I can just get a show. Oh, we're all the way turned up too. Dave?
Does he have his microphone off?
That's alright.
Are you talking to us? Give us thumbs up if you're talking to us. Oh, there he is. I can see you, can't hear anything though.
He might, is he still muted?
No, he's.
That's pretty clear, you can see it.
Maybe he's very close, so. Let me see if I can touch the laptop. One second, Dave.
Somebody's iPhone.
Can you try again, Dave? One more thing here. Oh, there we go.
Hi, Dave.
Was it you or was it us?
I create really thick outfits, I'm really good at that.
Wait a minute, I'm gonna switch you back. One second. Can you try again? Nope, alright, so I'm gonna.
Hi, John.
Oh, wait, one second. Dave, can you hear us?
I hope so.
There we go.
Hey, that's great.
Okay, sorry about that. Alright, um, do you have any information about the proposed skating rink, Dave?
Okay, what I was asked to do is, I looked into a system that we could hook up, there will, there'd be a skating room that we could take care of. The old existing one was consisted of wood and a, a liner, and there was no place to store the wood. And with the cost or anything, buying the wood was a problem. So I, I tried to reach out to what was going out there, and I found stuff with, um, with spadeable poly, uh, spadeable poly, uh, plastic frings. They would go around and you didn't have to damage the servers to make the same ring work. My only issue was that I'm not quite sure where we can store them, so I, that was something we were still trying to work out. It would fit on the location where the fire department had it before, and the fire department was more than willing to work with us.
Okay, good.
Okay, um, so we just have to figure out storage for it.
How much, how much storage space do you have for that? Yeah?
I think, I mean, I mean, that's a real problem. I mean, that's, that's the probably biggest issue.
How big is it, Dave?
It would fit inside the area that they have there.
I mean.
No, when you, when you fold it up at the end and.
Take it down.
How much space do you need to store it?
Probably not available. I can, I don't know, I don't know for tonight, I can, I'll find out, I can contact them tomorrow and I can have an answer for you.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, we're just concerned.
Maybe with something out by the transportation.
Right, that's what I was thinking too. Like, um, is there space somewhere, maybe anywhere they put the bales or?
There might be room, like, because they're doing one of those elevators, right?
Yeah, that would be actually, without taking out this base thing.
Right.
I'm asking.
That would be cool.
So, yeah, David, if you could maybe get an idea of the space requirements for it when it gets broken down and put away, that would be great.
I can do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
I will do that.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Hey, Dave, one quick question. I, I think they have an allocation in here for like seven thousand dollars. Do we have any idea of what the cost of that is?
Yes.
At, at the time when I sent it in, it was seven thousand dollars, that's, I, I believe it's probably, it's, it's probably changed some. I, I didn't, like, I can, I can come tomorrow and get a number.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Dave. Okay.
So, I don't know if we wanna.
I'll be meeting tomorrow, or I'm sorry, no, different meeting tomorrow, sorry.
Feel free to email us with the information too, if you'd like.
Why don't we do the research, because we're gonna have time again before this meeting.
Okay, alright, so we'll be.
Do you guys know, Dave?
Yes, I do.
No, Dave does his research, so if he found something.
He's very thorough.
Yeah, he's thorough.
Um, okay, I'm gonna mute.
No, I meant about the storage and stuff.
I agree.
Yeah, let's, is, is there a place we could put it?
Yeah.
Protect it.
It's upstairs in town. It's upstairs in town hall, but it, it's not gonna work up there.
Yeah, how do you get it up there?
That's funny.
Pick the windows up.
We're gonna put it in an elevator. Um, alright, so.
We get the work crew. We get the strapping, we work crew.
Yeah, it's just a, maybe pick up happening.
Alright, and so then, the last thing we had was, um, I think Sarah sent a new, um, proposed budget for the library, is it? Yes.
Was it, is it one percent over or is it five percent now?
Well, no, because they changed it to five percent, um, so their new bottom line is, so eighty-six, two fifty-three for a four-point-eight percent increase.
What changed?
That, that seems weird to me, because, uh, well, unless it's all salary.
Oh, good.
Cause it was, so eighty-six, two fifty-three, um, and it was proposed that, so this would be the. So that, it's almost like, well, it's, it's more like a, a five percent across the whole bottom line than it is the salaries, though that doesn't really make sense to me. Cause if you do just salaries.
Yeah, it's unchanged, cause it wasn't one percent. Which seemed okay.
Fourteen, yeah, it's only. If you do just the salaries, it's only sixteen hundred dollars.
Is it right for one?
No, well, well, no, cause the last budget they sent us, um, so the last, when Tamara presented the budget, she said they were gonna do the five percent salary increase like we did.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, their budget.
You have a five percent of one salary increase and the whole budget wouldn't bring enough five percent?
That's right. That's right. Do you have, um, you have that one, Jack, for some reason it's not letting me undo this, this change.
What?
Yeah, that one. So it was, yeah, so it was eighty-three, eighty-three through sixty. That's, this is what it was. And so it's like a three thousand dollar increase, which doesn't make sense based on the five percent increase that they said. Cause if they do five percent there, they must've done additional increases in here. Unless they didn't do the math right. Cause really, if they did just the five percent on the salaries, it's really. Okay, I'll have to, I'll circle back to Sarah.
That's fine.
And ask her, um, about that because the numbers, it doesn't really, it's a difference of.
Difference of, she said three thousand dollars.
Yep, roughly. Actually, it's twenty, almost twenty-nine hundred dollars. Okay, so that's, um, that's what we had on the list to resolve.
A few other things we could definitely talk about.
We could, like, Joe's here.
Yeah, and Joe first, oh, but then there's Joe. Joey, I knew the other day, we just talked a lot, it was interesting, I bet it was very well done.
I didn't get to meet Joe, but I'm going to.
Yeah, that's true. Like I, you know, we talked about that the budget, and I figured, well, and I came across it, I thought, and then it was only to the, to the budget committee, just as a thought. So, Kim, I, I think we wanted to talk about.
The SIP.
The SIP, and I know one of the things.
Oh, that reminds me, like, you gotta talk about funds, reserve funds.
Was that, you know, when we were going over the budgets, specifically the police department, one of the things that was in the original, as we were working through the, the SIP with, when Caroline was here as well as with the others, and I did send, you know, I sent out a recap note to people. And I realized that after we saw the budget from the, from the police department, that there was a misunderstanding as far as how the body cameras are gonna be paid. In, in the discussion with the SIP, misunderstanding or whatever, but it was on the, um, when we talked about pushing, you know, as far as how we wanted to handle was that the police cameras, the body cameras in here were going to be part of the operating budget, not as part of the SIP. So where we talked about there being, you know, and then.
Storage is part of the.
The, the seven thousand, and I confirmed, I sent John an email over the weekend and he confirmed back to me, cause I kinda said, John, it seems like seven thousand is operating budget, that's for the storage, and you agreed that the twenty-five thousand for the body camera is SIP. And he said yes, and that's not, you know, while I think I caught that initially when we were talking about the budgets as we kinda looped around. So that, that is currently not in, in the SIP, so we do wanna maybe change around some, some thoughts. If you have, um, the email I sent to the select board September ninth.
Can I print a copy over to those guys?
That'd be great.
Is there, separate, separate thought process, is there a way that we can fund some of this, do you remember, rescue fund, like body cameras or?
Well, I think we need to look at it, for sure.
You know, cause we're, just picking up, just picking up process for a minute, but, you know, we talked about, I, it's two hundred and seventy thousand allocated and we agreed that possibly affiliate part of the bucket would go to sewer and water, but John had mentioned he wanted to use some fund.
I, I think you use it for the whole town first.
That's what I thought.
And then you do, you know, you definitely give a portion of it to them, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it the same way as you, you gotta look at the whole town as taxpayers first and then water and sewer districts, so.
Might be an offset.
Something, something to do, it just might be. You just have to have a reason why body cameras would be cultivated.
Oh, thank you. We're on the same page.
So, I don't know if you wanna look at it or just have me walk through it.
Yeah, why don't you?
So, when we first, when I got the SIP report and the spreadsheet, there was a lot of stuff, you know, I had to understand a little bit, worked with Caroline, she was helpful with it and stuff. But basically, at the end of that process, there was like a hundred and two thousand excess in it. And we talked about, okay, we can, we can address that with some of the other projects that are already there. Fire department vehicle exhaust system, the highway replacement, the roof, and then even after that, you have almost twenty thousand left over. And Kim, that's where you were, you were talking, well, maybe we should use that as part of the road. But then as we went through further in the budgets, you know, that, there was that, the conflict of where the SIP thought the was gonna be as part of the operating budget, that was a misunderstanding, it really has to be part of the SIP. So obviously, if you put the twenty-five thousand back into the SIP, it chews up the twenty grand plus a little more. Now, you can always play around with some of these numbers, and again, this is, my understanding of the SIP is it's kind of like a, it's not etched in stone, it's just kind of a management tool to, to help the budget committee and the select board kind of decide how, what to do with this. So, you know, I can put, I can put the twenty-five thousand back into SIP and then we can, if we wanna really make it come down to zero, we can, we can adjust some of the numbers that are in there for the vehicle exhaust system or replace the roof. Or we can say, well, we're not gonna replace the roof this year, we can take that up completely and use the difference for the road, I mean, it's all up to what the select board wants to do.
So, Jack, did you ever talk to George about the roof replacement, um, and they don't have an estimate, that's just.
I mean, they showed it to me when I first came on board, but I haven't, had no conversation.
Yeah, I think in the discussion with them, it was, I mean, and, and where the, the SIP group committee came around with this is to say, okay, and it's a recommendation, they were spending sometimes three, three grand a year just repairing the thing. You know, because windstorm would come through and blow some stuff off, be interesting if anything happened the past week. But, um, so that was kinda like saying, well, we have this extra funds in here, why don't we just solve a problem that's a continuous headache every year? So that was the recommendation of, of committee. But, you know, e- even if we didn't have the misunderstanding on the body cameras, that's still, that's still just a recommendation, you know. The select board can still decide how they wanna move this stuff around.
Joe, how do you decide what to, like, what you're gonna spend, how much you're gonna spend on SIP each year?
It's, it, the, it's a magic of the spreadsheet. It does their, you know, the, the, the department heads and stuff come in and say, this is, these are things that we think should be part of the capital improvement. And, well, when do you think you're gonna need it? And you try to kinda angle out the, or you kinda try to, um, start saving enough money as part of that to do that, and then there's a column that says, okay, for twenty twenty-two as an example, there, there should be a set aside of two hundred and seven thousand, I think it was. Well, that becomes what would make sense to use as a starting point with, in the Warren article. And then those, you know, you can keep it at two oh seven, you can decide it should be two thirty, you can say, look, we, because of things, we could only do it one, you know, one hundred and seventy-five or whatever it is. So, it's kind of, there's an indication about, based on what people saying, they think they need in their capital improvements, and here's a suggested amount for the Warren article. Just like in here, we talked about, there's a suggested amount for the equipment funds. You know, that's, that's another Warren article that the town has put, you know, has put up to the, um, to the taxpayer, to Boden. So, it is, you know, it's not a hard, I don't see, I mean, I'm new to this also, so it's not a hard and fast number, but it's something that's not just pulled out of the air, you know.
So, um, okay. So the air compressors, um, we have a hundred thousand dollars, I have this situation here. We have a hundred thousand dollars planned for that, but we don't really know, um, a hundred percent. We don't know the cost, they're too costly that, it's really an estimate, right?
Yes.
So this is what we got proposed.
Now, is this Caroline's sheet or what, is there a version?
Yeah, it was the fir-, yes, I think it either came from Caroline or you, probably Caroline. Does that look right? It looks, I mean, that's what I remember the numbers.
Hey, Heidi, you can tell if you scroll down to the bottom, I, I made some changes to it, oh, it doesn't seem like it, yeah, now that must be Caroline.
Well, this is from September of, September twenty-eighth.
Of this year?
Yeah, so this, like, this is when I actually probably found it and saved it.
Yeah, but that must be Caroline. See, cause at the end of the one, there were a lot of formula mistakes. No, well, the, the things weren't adding up right, so one of the things I did was kinda go and get the calculations right. But what I also did, that column source, I think it is, right, there's only C.
Yep.
And O.
Yes.
I added a couple other.
O, is this, A is for ARPA?
Oh, okay, no, that is mine, yeah, that's it.
Well, it might be on date though.
If, yeah, I have version seven is the, is the latest one, but that might not have been. Wrong incentive.
Um, sure, you can do that. But I, I think, so at a high level, these numbers are right though, right? I mean, this was what the.
Did you?
Well, yeah, you see how the body camera one has a source of O for operating budget?
Yes.
If you change that to C.
Right.
Uh, it would, it would put it into the SIP category.
Okay, so yeah, maybe you could send me your latest copy, that would be great.
Yeah, that, you want it for tonight, you want now to play with it or you just send?
No, I, I think just, unless you think it's important, but I think we know that these are the things we're focused on.
Right.
And the numbers are correct.
As far, you know, in terms of the, the, uh, the gross capital costs, those are numbers that came in from the department heads. And there was some discussion around realistic ones, and I thought on the, like, the vehicle exhaust system, it might have been changed.
It did, um, yeah, cause they had an estimate, like, we can do it for fifty and under.
Yeah, okay, so obviously that one's not.
That's why it's seventy-five, that's why it's seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, it went down to like.
Yeah.
So, that's right, the, the extra twenty-five thousand we're saving there is what I said, we could use that towards roads.
Okay.
Um, but, but now we have to backfill for body cams.
Yes, right.
So, so realistically, we're back down to really like about nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand in excess, which is what we.
Yeah, we're almost back to where, with that original shape. So I should change the vehicle exhaust to fifty thousand?
Yep.
Yes.
So that vehicle wash area, um, there's a note here that says, um, vehicle wash area project for a cost of twenty-five thousand should be funded out of the ARPA funds.
Right.
So, but we're planning for the cost anyways?
Uh, what's it, I think it has a name there though, doesn't it?
Oh, it does, yeah, it does.
So that was it, and, and I think at the bottom of that sheet, there's a, I, I put some totals in for each of the sources. So you can see, well, this is the total for SIP, this is the total for equipment, this is the total for ARPA.
Maybe it'll come up.
Oh, you had some filters on it, that's why we didn't see it before.
Here we go. Does that kind of?
So those are the totals by source for the year of, uh, for the, for the total gross capital cost. Then obviously, as you go across, you know, up, there's that purchase target year, which is what the department heads are telling us should be the year that they need it. And then the twenty twenty-two is, and, and out is what should be the suggested allocation for the Warren article for each of those years.
So, um, say that last sentence one more time? The twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, so that, that is the suggested amount that we think should go in, should be set aside.
Oh, this one here, yes, yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha, yep. Um, okay, so I guess that's why I asked, um, how you determine what to spend each year on capital.
It would, you know, in, in the conversations with Caroline, it, it, well, what to spend or what to set aside?
What to spend.
Well, the, what to spend is the purchase target year, when the, when the business, when the department heads say, I need this in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. So that's, that's the thing that kind of drives what has to come out of the, let's call it the SIP trust fund to be paid for, though, that's when that, that's when those funds actually have to go there. The, the, the year columns are set aside as a, as a way of slowly, it's like a, remember the old Christmas card funds? You put a little money in each month, so you had money for Christmas presents. So that's, that's what those are kind of for, those are, and, and the source of those is the Warren article for each of those years.
So that four million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, that's what we have in SIP now?
I'm sorry, which number?
SIP total? Oh, no, it's gross capital.
Yeah, that, that's, at some point, you say, hey, we're gonna go buy everything.
Oh, okay, that's a question.
If you bar it off today, that's what it would cost.
Yeah, yeah.
So, how much do we have in SIP now?
Scroll over to the right, I, oh, no, isn't there, uh, is, is there a SIP balance tab? Down the, I think that's, okay, so that number there, the three sixty-two, that's, that's what's there now.
Okay.
And that, so it seems what, what's happened in past years is that whatever the Warren article amount is, then, and I, I don't know, but obviously this was done last year. They'll take whatever's there, and my thought would be maybe just do it proportionally across every, everything that you need for that year, for what you need to set aside. Those num, then that, that Warren article amount gets put into each of those, um, each of those capital improvement items to decide, oh, I, I, I have to fund in twenty twenty-two fifty thousand dollars for this particular item. But proportionally would mean only forty thousand because we have all those other items in there. So you would, you would take some proportion of it and say, oh, that's what I'm gonna do.
So are you locked into that?
No, no.
No? So, I mean, we, we can allocate it as we need?
Yeah, well, you, you can allocate it to wherever you want.
Right.
And then what you're gonna show there is, 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 is a potential shortfall that come twenty twenty-five, you might say, I need a new whatever it is.
And you don't have.
And, but you've only set aside so much, so where's the rest of that money gonna come from? So it does become a little bit of a, yeah, not a shell game, but, you know, it becomes a little bit of a, hey, it's a limited amount of funds and you gotta decide where to put it.
Right, right.
This is not meant to be a definitive, as I'm learning more about, not a definitive, just, you know, push the button and pay and cut the checks. It's mostly like, okay, at least you have some facts to play with and to, something that, you know, I've always said, something that you could sit down, put it in front of people and justify your decision versus, I just thought this would be a good idea, you know, so.
Who creates the Warren articles?
Um, we do, yeah.
And how do we do that? Because I, I don't know anything about it.
Um, well, we have some pre-existing Warren articles, some of like equipment funding, there's already, um, old previous Warren article, we would just probably use that. But, um, we have to come up with a, the description of it and the, you know, the amount.
The amount, yeah.
State and approves, DRA approves the wording, okay. That's good.
Well, most, right, the, the wording's the same like the equipment one.
Right.
You're editing please for the amount.
Yeah, but if you create something, they.
Right.
Yeah, so we can go back and go with these ones and kinda base it on those. So I guess the question.
How do we know what we need?
Well, this is one example, like, there's a Warren article out there to fund the SIP. And that's the justification for it, but then I guess like, I'll just.
You mean like for, by department, each department?
Yes.
They need the, um, SIP committee and they tell them what they want? I don't, so, I mean, I don't think that you necessarily do any vetting of the requests, like, you didn't go out, look at the highway roof and say, yeah.
Well, no, we didn't, no, no, those are things that we, we asked, like, in the case of the roof, George, to give us some ballpark numbers.
So like, so like, Jack, it'll be like, I don't have any issue, it'll be probably, I'm just gonna put the number, I'll, I'll already be, we'll say seven or eight. So like, it's like Jack, it'll be like, I don't have any issue, it'll be probably, I'm just gonna put the number up, but I already be, we'll say seven of our warrant articles are already going through this shit out of.
The carryover?
Yeah.
Carryover.
And then we're gonna have.
Well, not necessarily, we used to decide on some of those, like, the reserve funds, for example, yeah.
But then, like, what George just said is, if we decide to say, say, George, hypothetically speaking, say this last storm ripped half the roof off.
Yeah.
Then George says, hey, you know, we can get into it, forty thousand dollars to fix the roof, then it's become a warrant article, then we're gonna, correct me if I'm wrong.
That would be a little approach.
Then we pull out of it, you know, we create a warrant article, possibly pull out a SIP file, and say, hey, we're gonna have a warrant article to fix forty thousand dollars. So we're gonna, through meetings with everybody, we're gonna figure out what warrant article we're gonna pass through.
So, is that, I was gonna say, is that, I'm trying to understand the process, too, so even, even to fund something that's in the SIP, that also gets done as a warrant article?
I think it would be continued on from last year to this year, and even next year.
Yeah, you're right.
And then changing the subsequent, but did you guys see from DRA how, like, the town has, towns want to have between, like, I think it's five and seventeen percent of the revenue?
Yes.
Did you see that?
Yes.
And we are somewhere around ten or eleven percent.
We're about the median.
In the fund, in the.
So.
Budget balance, there's a balance, but, and I, I kind of talked about that.
Yeah, you do, you do your job.
You said we're at like eight percent or something.
Yeah, whatever.
I thought we were.
Five is the median.
It was a little bit higher, but it was.
I think we're like nine, right in the, right in the middle, but on the good side of it, yes.
So, so the things that we have to decide is, you know, and do we want more information before we agree to do these warrant articles? Like the compressors, the air compressors, um, I don't know, see, I'm concerned we don't have enough information, um, and these are just like numbers that are getting thrown out. Um, for some of these, like, we already got information on body cams, vehicle exhaust, and vehicle wash, but we think we need to know more about the roof replacement and the compressors. Like, do we really need to replace all five compressors in this building this year, you know? I, I just feel.
So who do we talk to about that?
Um, so, I'm not sure. I'm not sure where they came up with that number, um, do you know where they came up with?
That, the compressor, Caroline was the one who brought those up, and I think it had been a lot higher, and her input was that, well, they, they had done, if there were five of them there, maybe two of them had been done pretty recently, and maybe they didn't have to be dealt with. So that's, that was.
Does John know about that? Please, Jay?
Hmm, I'm thinking, was it Pete, Pete Gagnon, something?
Well, they do the, um, I don't remember if they do the air, I can find out who does the air, I can try and.
Was it Sean, someone was talking about this in depth not too long ago.
Well, Pete Gagnon does our heating systems.
Okay, so Sean was the one bringing it up there, about, you had Sean talk about, maybe a month ago, he was talking about the air compressor news and.
I can also, we can go through Caroline's email and see what she has for information on that, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll look at the replacement of the roof, I'll talk to George about that.
And, you know, it's, I guess, the, the compressors, it's, it's a, a want or a need.
Well, and do you need to do them all at once? I mean, can you do like one a year? So I think we need to do a little more, a little bit more research on that, but, okay. So, so back to what Joe, um, is suggesting, so if, we basically really, it comes back down to about nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars in excess now. Because we gotta put the twenty-five back that we were able to save on the vehicle exhaust toward the body cams.
Right, and put the, so the spreadsheet I'll send to you tomorrow, I'll, I'll make those two changes.
Okay.
To, um. Fifty thousand, and, yeah, and then the, the, yeah, then I said, I have those two on my notes.
Okay.
Is there a amount of access that's good? Like, you said, like, you said there was excess money of, well, if you didn't count the body cams, it would have been like forty thousand, right?
Uh, would have been nineteen.
Yeah.
Well, no, then if you, right, if you took off the other twenty-five.
Yeah, the twenty-five, yeah.
But is there an amount of money that you wanna have, like, in other words, over budgeted for this stuff? Like, if you have everything planned for two hundred thousand dollars, do you wanna have like two hundred and twenty in it? Does that make sense?
I mean, to the, what we talked about before, the, if you do twenty-twenty-two and you ask for two hundred, because I think the proposal here was like two hundred and six, or something like that, for the warrant article. Two hundred and seven, five hundred, so if we decide, if the select board decides that's just not gonna work, it should be one ninety, well, then you, you do have needs that have been identified that are gonna be underfunded. So, yeah, I, I think it can make sense that you, you don't necessarily wanna spend down to zero, because you, who knows what's gonna happen.
Right, right, so like, that actually, I mean, it may not be a bad thing.
So, Joe, if ARPA's paying for the vehicle wash area, why do we have to do a warrant article board?
Oh, I don't know.
You don't?
I would say you.
Do we know that?
I think we still do.
Uh, well, that's the note in here.
No, that's, it's still a proposing that we do that, do we know that we can do that? That, that, that they won't pay for it that way?
I, it's been pretty consistent, both from, I thought, the fire chief, as well as even when Caroline was here, because that's really where the, where it started from.
So, if, if that, if that's all true, I would propose that we don't do a warrant article for the vehicle wash, we use ARPA, and we use the, that twenty-five that we recover again and put it in roof.
Yeah, but, by the way, do you want me to add a SIP item for roads?
It used to be in SIP.
Yeah.
It's been, what, five years now?
Mm-hmm.
We had, um, I think it was probably five years back or so.
I think we should probably get back to that.
I think we should, and we can keep it, not, keep it operating for now, because we're not gonna change all that, but I think that we should have the ability, when we have excess, to put it towards the roads.
Yeah, from SIP.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send out, there was a, I found a very good article from New Hampshire Municipal, whatever.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, they did, they had a very good article on, um.
Use of ARPA?
The use of, no, no, the use of SIP and, and the, it's, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's flexible in what you put in SIP. I mean, I was kind of looking at it to say, you know, maybe somebody would say, yep, roads can go in, or no, they can't, but they really just talked about, hey, it depends on the town size, it depends on what the town thinks is, you know, you have criteria around the cost and how long things last. And so, yeah, it could, it could be, it could be put in there, I'll, I'll add that, and I guess what I'll do then, if you want the SIP to, to kind of come down to zero, after I put in, after I reduce the vehicle wash to fifty and put in the, the body cameras. Whatever that number comes adjusting out to, I'm gonna put into the, why not for, for twenty-twenty-two or twenty, I guess that would be twenty-two, twenty-two, okay.
So, so we're talking about, well, um, so my takeaways from this are, um, I'll try to do a little bit of research on the air compressors. The vehicle exhaust will go to a fifty thousand dollar warrant.
Right.
The vehicle wash area, we won't do a warrant, we'll use ARPA.
Well, is there a procedural question, that you still need to do one for, for, and just say the source, no, no impact on taxation, source of ARPA, I don't know. I mean, it's kind of similar to what.
We can, we, we can check that out, yeah.
What do you guys actually use, when you say ARPA? Are you talking American Rescue Plan?
American, okay, I just wanted to make sure we're talking.
We have two hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I just, I call it.
That's a really good.
I call it the American Rescue Plan, that's actually called.
Um, how we worry now, because it's another source of funding.
Right, right, is it, it's the same as, you, you do one for funds coming out of the SIP, you know, right, we were, we were just talking about, uh. Like the articulating loader, blah, 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 you know, fifty thousand from capital improvement reserve fund established for this purpose, no amount to come from taxation. So I, I would think, it sounds, I mean, to me, the wording is similar.
I would say that the wording would be like that, and we would do warrant article for the main reason that it also reflects on how less than the ARPA money.
But that, does that mean that the, I guess, I don't know why they would, but the town, the voters could vote that down?
The theory.
It's kind of, yeah, right.
They could, but they, they don't understand, there's not money actually coming out of taxation, well.
Right.
I should say, it is coming out of taxation from every single American, that's not, but it's not coming out of taxation from the town.
Right.
But it also tells a story of what the, the sense of the body is about investing our ARPA funds in the fire department versus something else.
Right, and then there's also, we do finally have to go to whoever it is to say, okay, this, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we, we used, is how we used it, you have a warrant article that says here's twenty-five thousand, here's fifty thousand, is that what I'm saying? Does that make sense? Okay.
It does, what do you think, Jack?
I, I agree, I'm, I'm just wondering if the body cams could fit in there. I don't know whether they can or not, but you gotta look at it.
Well, and this is where we really need to, um, spend some time, maybe I'll do that one more.
Thirty-page book.
Free ARPA, ARPA.
Not in Nashville, you aren't here.
Not in Nashville.
No, but I think, I, again, we keep on saying it each week, but it's important for all three of us to read the thirty pages, and I gotta.
Well, I already did read it once, I scanned through it.
Scanned through it, yeah, it did, it hit the highlights, but.
Yeah, exactly, but I think it's a, a more, um, comprehensive document.
So, is there a document that, I'd, I'd be interested in just taking.
There is, yeah.
And I think, Jack, you said you found some articles on each area.
I gotta look, yeah, I did.
We can try to share some stuff with you, Joe.
Yeah, it's.
I think it's like a SIP, though, it's up, you can almost pick what you wanna do there.
In SIP?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's similar, I mean, as far as the definition there is not concrete, like black and white.
Okay.
No, but I've been, like I said, I've been, I've been really trying to follow nationally and locally, and there was just an article this past Sunday in the Boston Herald about Boston, because Boston's a.
Using it as a ten city.
Three billion dollars, that's how much they've received from the American Rescue Plan, and they were thinking how they're gonna use it here, and they're doing stuff like, you ever heard of CAS, is that, CAS and something, Mass and CAS, was that really bad area with the homeless and everything? They're putting like a million dollars into a shelter there, using the American Rescue Plan, so, I mean, Boston, they have Boston, Boston.
This weekend.
Three billion, they got.
So that, we know that you can definitely invest in infrastructure, and I wonder if that vehicle wash would fall under infrastructure.
Yeah.
So.
I just, I don't know where we would be able to put body cams in, however, but I bet if we start to do a safety.
There's, there's a whole page on, on like emergency and police, um, so.
Yeah, I bet it would fall into it, and that would be good.
Okay, so what, we need to do a little more research on that, so I think that's kind of what we're thinking, though, is if we can fund, um, the vehicle wash out of ARPA, we would do that, and body cams, that don't matter. But we have to do a little bit more research, um, before we can.
Well, I'll, I'll put it into the SIP, just because that's where we're saying it belongs now, and then if it comes out, it'll just change to A, and that the excess will be to something else, if you decide to save it for a rainy day, or, you know, there's something else.
Will be in the high percentage.
We got something, if it's on your.
Well, I do, I wanna go back to the septic system that the, um, fire station is going to be needing.
Okay.
And that's gonna have to be taxpayer funded, and if you could use the ARPA money there, it would save all, everybody's tax dollars.
The only thing that the silver lining, you know, this other thing?
Well, they, I know what he said, but I think he's looking at it as, we have all these other priorities, and that one is not the water district priority.
Right.
But I think it's the taxpayers' priority.
Yeah, and I think there was also a timing in that you have to use the funds by a certain date.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-six, huh?
Oh, no, that, I don't, I didn't think it was that far out, I thought it was like April of next year.
No, 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 you have to. Of course you need it. Say, say what.
You have to say what you're using it for, but you, you can use them up to twenty-six, I believe.
Well, so now that's just an upgrade to hook up to the water source, so, but it's not, um, mandatory, it's not a fix, it's an upgrade. But then the other thing you look at is the Old Mill Bridge lane, anyway, we wanna talk about that, but that would be an infrastructure project, you know? So there's probably many projects in here.
But I, that Old Mill, I thought that seventy-five was just like a replacement of the current temporary bridge, versus nearly fixing.
Yeah, and George brought up some interesting information with, Kevin, how the dollar, well, whatever it was.
Two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I was gonna say two hundred to do it permanently for.
Two fifty.
Yeah, it was two fifty. And, did we ever get the price of what the original permanent temporary bridge was?
No.
I was gonna say like seventy, so that was.
Yeah, that's probably where the seventy-five came from, yeah.
So can we look at, say, the next, um, because ARPA.
Can you say normal bridge would be like five hundred K or six hundred K?
It's because I think, so ARPA takes us out of twenty-twenty-six, so see, these are some of the projects, um, that.
Yeah, so.
I mean, that, that was outgoing for that guy Mike to be looking at, if you, if you wanna go back.
What's that, oh, yes, Mike Becken, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the one thing we asked, the big thing I was wanting to do.
Right.
Take this on.
Yeah, I won't get it there, well, we'll, we'll get it there, but I'm a little, little confused about what happened there. But so, so while we are just talking more briefly.
Well, actually, we wanna see, Joe, if we wanna let him off the hook, or if you're willing to stay, but I feel like we should just plan to circle back with him in a week or so.
Joe, let me help you.
Yeah.
A week or two.
From the government?
No, that's my first idea, first, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah. The opposite.
I, I missed that.
No, you said he'd let me help, help me, you know, from the government.
Um, so maybe like within a week or two, we circle back with you about some of what, of our findings, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I'll send you what I have, you know, tomorrow, the changes we talked about, in terms of my schedule, I know you have a meeting next Monday, but I'm not.
I'm not here any of these, but, these guys are gonna run the show, and Zoom, and everything, who's gonna be the Zoom person?
You're gonna do Zoom? I don't know, I don't know.
We'll have, we'll have, I'll have Harry come in.
I'll, 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 I'll get someone to do it.
He knows somebody. So we could.
Actually, I could probably figure it out, yes, but I don't.
It's really, if you have, you had a setup on your computer.
You just need, yeah, you need another password.
We can do a practice one.
Okay.
Um, so Joe, I think we can do a special meeting if you want it, just like another quick budget workshop, I see, quick, um, to decide, finalize that.
So that would probably be the weekend of the fifteenth?
Yeah, the week, yeah, we, so I'll.
Oh, we're doing that Monday meeting, right, the town meeting?
Yeah, fifteen to fourteen.
That's the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, but we could do it right after that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Fifteen, is that, you, you're around the fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we do the fifteen?
Okay, that sounds good.
Makes sense?
Yep, fifteen, we'll meet anyway.
All right, so I'll just, I'll put that down, just kind of.
So we'll try to get a little bit more information by then. Could you get that to me? We're gonna, um, invite Joe back to come vote, so, on the, yeah, I'm writing that down now, to finalize the CIP, hopefully. Okay, good, so Joe, you're welcome to stay for future discussions, if you want.
Yeah, no, I think I will, also, I do have one, you know, so I.
My boy.
I just, so I'm on the conservation, uh, commission.
Is, are you new to that, or you been on that for?
Just like a year, yeah.
Oh, speaking, that's actually why you mentioned that, because we have to decide what to fund conservation.
That's what I was gonna just bring up in terms of, so at the meeting, we did talk, you know, and, and Kim, I, I mentioned to you, in the past years, whenever that warrant article was in, it was always a no impact to tax, because it was always coming out of the land use change.
Oh, right, yes.
Now that's to zero, I, you know, on the commit, the, the things we've talked about on the commission is that there's, there's probably still a need, and I, I think it's, it's a cost-effective use of tax dollars to kind of build up that, um, the Conservation Land Trust. It's currently at one eighty-four plus twenty-five, so fifteen, you know, let, let's say two-ten. Probably, you know, Linda's McGarvin's, McGarvin's viewpoint is that her discussions with Seltz is that has to be up in like probably the, the two-fifty, the two-seventy-five rate, so that you have a war chest, that if something pops up in town, and we want to, you know, work with a Seltz or some other organization, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to show your commitment to it, versus just saying, oh, we're gonna bond it out and then change the taxes. So I, we're, we're very, we had the discussion tonight about, you know, wanting to put a, a warrant article in for that, and the number's up, I mean, in the past, it's always been about twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So, or it has been twenty-five thousand, but this would be a year that it would be part of the tax rate, you know, unless some, some land materially gets sold and, and the land use, cha, change fund is, is pumped up, but, um, so, Lorraine was gonna send me some stuff, and I guess the process is, and I'll, I'll put together the for, the wording for the warrant article, and I send it to the select board as far as, this is coming from the Conservation Commission, here's our, we wanna submit this warrant article, then you guys have to decide, you can think about it as part of it. I mean, I, we're, we would, if, if the select board thinks that it can't go through, I think we would definitely go kind of a petition route, at least to put it up in front of the voters, although I think it's always best to have the select board's.
Approval.
Approval, but then, correct, um, so that's, you know, there's, there's never enough money for everything, but.
What are you thinking for a number, Joe?
Twenty-five thousand, and nothing more than to, like I said, I think we're like two-ten, two-fifteen, the goal is to get it up to probably like two-fif- The goal is to get it up to probably like two fifty, two seventy five, so maybe for the next couple of years, and then we have to decide, you know, in a couple of years, we might have a better idea of what's going on in town as far as the land that might be up for sale, working with Seltz and stuff like that, but, you know. But I, I can kinda see it going for the next two years as probably for that, just to put us in a position.
So that looks like a nine, about a nine percent tax impact. So one of the things we haven't done over the years, and I've kind of pushed for it, is to put the tax impact on the articles. Some people think about what it really means to say yes.
Yeah, can you do that?
They used to.
Okay.
I think Ed, when Ed was doing it, they used to do that, and then it stopped, and I think it's an important piece of information for voters. But that's pretty minor, so nine, nine cents.
Yeah, nine, I also, I mean, even for this particular one, I mean, I've, I've done enough research and back of the envelope stuff, is that this, this kind of stuff, not putting land into development has probably gotta be the most cost effective way of, of using tax dollars. I mean, you go with what we spend on the school and every, all the other infrastructure things that come along, you don't make the money back on whatever the tax revenue is on, on housing and stuff.
Right.
Especially if it's multiple units, it's even worse.
That's a misconception by a lot of people, is that houses generate revenue, and they really don't.
No, they don't. And really not even, I mean, really just to mention, you know, in a, in a town like Rollinsford, in the area that it's in, bordered by Dover, Somersworth, by Portsmouth, it's, you know, I'm, I'm a new guy here, so, you got stuff, but, I mean, I mean, it's really just the gem, and, and if you can keep that character, it can only help everybody else's housing value, truly.
Right.
So I've been on the conservation board before here, it was the first board I was on for the town, so like my eye is with that too. What Joe's saying is that I agree that we gotta think about, I mean, I've had eight raising taxes, but it's something that.
But it's worth the nine cents.
Yeah.
I think it's worth a nine cents to keep Rollins.
Is that where it is, nine cents?
It would be a nine cents tax.
Cause likely, I wanna say, I don't know if likely is the right word, but it looks like likely we got a person to buy all that land, it's gonna be one landowner.
On their roof.
Yeah, which is, I mean, I still like to feel better, but it's a nice example, but we could have had
Right.
ten houses out there.
Well, I heard there was a six, potentially a six house lot, but
Okay, so.
But there's another one on Oak Street.
Janatus, right?
Janatus, that has come up, and I don't know how many houses they could get in there.
So.
On Oak Street, which?
Um, right on the corner of Oak and one oh one. Um, the Elliot Road.
Oh, there.
Across from the old armory, I think it is.
Yeah, but that's still.
Part of, still were part of its own Rollins.
Yeah, that's what, um.
Yeah, that's.
John was talking about that. Oh, no, no, Charlie George was, and, and I, I was curious about it, because I went and looked, I swear that was.
Part of his Rollins.
It must be a small part.
Yeah.
It's a very, yeah, I think it's a small part.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I seen that place that big youth house they fixed up, and saw that backfield was for some people soon.
Oh, okay, so it's that backfield from that house.
Yeah, it's a barn, it looks like there's a red barn, and there's a for sale sign right in front of it.
Renovating it.
Right, yeah. The house they're renovating right now.
Well, I wanna stop your guys' fun here tonight.
No, thanks.
So, thanks, Joe. So you're gonna send the, can you just send your updated SIP, because there's probably formula fixes that you have in there?
Yep.
And then, okay, and you're gonna formally send a request for the conservation of this?
For the warrant article, yeah.
Okay, great, perfect, thank you.
Great, thanks, thanks for everything. You guys spend a lot of time here.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Well, we're like you were, you know, kind of, first year of figuring it out.
Yeah.
Um, so then a couple.
Your statement in your
Oh.
your email wasn't accurate.
Which one was that?
About learning, girl, and a learning process.
Actually, I'll send you the, the link on SIP. You're, you're the select board representative, and then there's somebody from the planning board too. I don't know if it's name, Urban?
I'm, oh, someone, what else? Oh.
Oh, Herburea?
Herb, no, no, I know Herb.
Guy from across the street.
That's what they do with the new guys that.
The one that bought Joe's, uh, that Joe's relative.
Joe, um, just one last question, the equipment request, that is not from SIP, correct?
Uh, yes, it is.
Reserve fund is?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, no, that is true, that is not from SIP, that's taxation.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you. Okay.
Not everybody.
Hi, Joe, great to meet you.
So just a couple more things on our funds, we also have, um, the Culvert Reserve Fund.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to decide whether to fund that this year, and we just put that on, see here. Culvert Reserve Fund. So equipment, that's what Joe was just having, Culvert Reserve, Revaluation Fund. So the Revaluation Fund, I still have not gotten, so the, the contract we have right now is for forty five thousand dollars for this next one.
It was eighty the last time?
It was eighty eight, and so I asked him why it was eighty eight. I asked Chad.
It's not a special year, right?
Um, so it was, they did a full assessment that year, and it was, they basically, they did all, redid all of the data. This year, they're doing kind of a more superficial assessment, I'll say.
Yeah.
Um, he said they, they're not going to the same level of depth as the previous, um, assessment. That's why it's forty five thousand. But he said there was a contract that indicates what the payment should be, and he was supposed to send it, he hasn't sent it yet. But we do have to decide to sign that document as well, as, and we also have to decide if we want to fund it again for this year. So now we are fully funded for this one, we're gonna pay for it, because we have fifty six thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars, and the contract's for forty five thousand.
Well, I'm confused, I'm confused, but I guess.
Unclear?
Clarification without it, how would be? What changes do you, if, that the assess, the assessing changes that much, eighty, eighty eight thousand, one year, forty five?
Well, again.
More intensive one year, like, I don't know why.
They're not doing, and they're not doing, I'll say, a deep assessment this year.
They're probably not going into houses and stuff like that.
It's more drive by, um, stuff, so it's just not as deep an assessment.
It's every ten years, I think they have, they do the deep dive.
Every ten.
No, every five years they do the assessments, but every ten years, I believe, they do the deep dive.
So we can, we can choose not to fund that this year, um, because it is, we do have a balance that will pay for this next contract. We would wanna fund it again following the year, though. Um, and then, but I still wanna see the contract from Chad, to see where.
One I already signed.
Well, no, he's got another one that, he said from the last, from the two thousand seventeen assessment that describes.
Right, he signed it. Yeah, the only one that signed it.
Yeah, he's the only one that signed it. Um, so we can choose not to do that as a warrant article.
Good.
Um, so the Culvert balance, we have fifty thousand in it now. Um, again, that's it's kind of optional, we don't have any immediate needs for Culvert up here that I know of.
Always comes up, though. Always comes up.
So these are all from taxation, so all of these reserve funds are from taxation.
Yeah, so.
But it's only.
What is it right now?
Ten thousand dollars. So we have fifty, fifty thousand dollars in there now. Um, and then last year, we, the last three years, we funded for ten thousand dollars each year. Which is, again, I mean, if you, even, it's a minimal tax impact.
Well, it is, but if you rent to where you just said, it's ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand, this year it's fifty thousand?
No, no, that's what we see.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's, that's what we did.
So a current, current balance there is fifty thousand.
Okay.
See.
We would put another ten.
Is Culvert Road taken out of that?
Um, I don't think we're doing anything to Culvert Road.
It just did.
He just did.
No, he just did the culvert.
Um, so, oh.
Is that, is, does that come out of that balance, I think, if you're saying, right?
Um, I don't, I think, I don't, I feel like they have to, um, do a request to spend out of the reserve fund. Let me ask about that, though. I, I think George said that the Culvert was gonna come through that, listen, okay. I'll check on that. Actually, does anybody else wanna sign up for that question?
Yeah.
Do you?
My list is, my list is getting low.
Give me, give me a couple of yours.
Well, some of these are just like, um, documentation, like research things, okay, so.
You got that, you wanna get that, Joe, you gotta get it.
I'm gonna meet him anyway, so I'm gonna be honest, I'll take that.
Okay. So, so we really need to decide on, well, the town, can we decide on the town revaluation fund? Do we not wanna do a warrant for that this year? I can go back and see.
Because we have the reserve, right?
Well, we have, we have, um, fifty thousand.
We have fifty seven thousand, right?
Yep, we have fifty thousand, um, already, and fifty six thousand. And the contract is going back.
So you're gonna have it like that?
So you're still, yeah, I would say if Mary Abbott, why don't you do it?
I'm saying.
Because you're gonna be asking for what, eighty? At least in five years.
We don't, but see, that's why we need to see that contract, because it sounded like they already have, knew what the numbers were, were going to be for a number of assessments, yeah. So maybe we don't make that decision today.
Right.
Cause it looks like we funded seventeen thousand in twenty seventeen, well, but then we had a deep assessment coming up, so I'm sure. And then they did eighteen, seven fifty in eighteen and nineteen and twenty.
What was the last deep one, when was the last high one, it was like?
Seven hundred and fifty cents.
Twenty.
I bet twenty one's the next big one.
Well, this is weird, cause the town, the town report says in twenty, twenty twenty, it was approved at eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, but this budget worksheet that, um, we were given says it was only ten thousand. Oh, I'm sorry, I lied to you, it's here, it's eighteen, seven fifty. I'm looking at the colors, so, so, okay, so we've been funding at eighteen, seven fifty.
Pretty consistently doing that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be an ongoing to
But do we wanna, do we wanna fund it at that level? Uh, maybe we need to know from Avatar what they're projecting for the assessment post system, yeah.
But what about the Culvert Fund, do you wanna put one back now, wanna keep, keep that the same?
I think, um, it's really, it's a four cents tax impact. So probably.
I'd say we would do that.
Um.
It's not gonna get better?
Well, well, we just, you know, four cents, nine cents, thirteen cents, all of a sudden it's a dollar.
Well, and then if you look at your operating budget right now, um, that's, um, as it stands, that's a twenty cent tax impact. So you get twenty, thirty, forty. I mean, you're you, you can say fifty cents easily, and then that, and then whatever the school.
We don't know what the school is either, right, that?
School would be down.
You think?
Yeah, I know.
I've heard something about that.
No?
And that's SIPs.
Down a head, trying to get down, what they're trying to break.
Um, I don't know that they're budgeting. Okay, so let's just make a commitment to this anyways. So we'll find out about the revaluation estimate, uh, going forward. Conservation is up, so they had been fifteen, um, the last time, they're going to twenty five, so this, this is gonna be potentially twenty five. Um, and then Culvert Reserve, and then Town Revaluation. And then SIP.
Mm-hmm.
And what are you doing with the equipment one? Um, and the equipment one. So, so we have funding besides the operating budget of two hundred and sixty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. Which is almost a dollar. Plus the operating budget.
So I might think of a little bit like that. If we need to cut someone. What we can take out.
So. Because the SIP is also from taxation, the reserve fund.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The SIP reserve fund?
Yeah.
Is also from taxation.
What is the reserve fund right now?
Well, so these, so, so this number here
No.
Um, would all be from taxation. Ninety four cents. So between SIP, um, capital, well, all the reserve funds and the town, um, it's a twenty cent, so you're talking
Dollar seventy five per dollar?
No, it's, um, so a dollar thirteen for a thousand. And that's not close.
What was last year? Flat?
Um, it's never flat, um, the operating budget.
Didn't they use some reserves or something to flatten it out?
Yeah, twenty five.
Yeah, to reduce it.
Yeah, that's. So is that good or bad? Help me out here.
A dollar thirteen, well, I mean, you have, you have to find a way to reduce that, a dollar thirteen for a thousand. Well, I mean, you know, it's a dollar thirteen times, so if your house is three hundred thousand dollars, times three hundred, so it's three hundred and somewhat dollars more. And then I think it was just last year, I know my, my personally went up like seven hundred, so I don't know that they offset it that year, so. So that's why, that's why I said.
So do you think that the people in the town would vote down the law, I'm sorry?
Well, I think it's, and this is where tax impact is important.
Yeah.
Where they have to see the tax impact, um, and, and the voters' guide should give them deep, some detail about where we are, like in terms of reserve funds.
I, I think that we should, we should include that, and I was actually kind of, last year, shocked that all warrant articles went, went through, like, every single warrant article last year was passed.
If it goes on the ballot, it gets passed.
Always, you gotta vote down a warrant article.
Not very often.
So we, we don't do town meetings anymore like that?
Deliberative session, we have a deliberative session.
But that's just information only, right?
Nope.
No, you asked questions.
Yeah, they can, they can say that, we want those, we don't, like.
That's the, the town's opportunity to change this budget. So.
And, and they can drive it to a default budget as that happens generally?
That's.
They can, yeah.
That's this, um, budget committee that can break them down.
No, they can, the default.
Yeah, I started, I thought you started turning one meeting.
You can, they can, they can, they can, somebody could make a motion to, um, adopt the amount of the default budget, yes.
It's a separate warrant article.
Did they do that a few years ago?
It's a separate warrant article, the default budget is a separate warrant, warrant article from the, so if the operating budget goes down, the it automatically kicks into the default budget, so you guys have to figure out what the default budget's going to be.
It's not a separate warrant article, but they're related.
No, it's part of the warrant article.
Right, right. Okay.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of confusion for the budget too, because you have to bring in the school, you have to bring in
You think you're okay, and then you throw the school in and everything else, it's hard to steer by.
None of these typically are pretty small, it's only like a few, it's only, it's less than is it ten percent of the operating budget? Okay, so a couple, two, three bucks.
So when does it all come together?
It has to all come together by.
March eighth?
Well, we, we need to finalize with the budget committee, um.
The tax rate has to come together and vote.
Well, that's this year, though.
Yeah, for this year, but.
But for next year, we have to, um, come up with a proposed budget for the budget committee soon.
Right.
Including the articles.
Uh, no, no. At the beginning of January, you have your public hearings on the budget.
So it's gotta be before that?
Yeah.
So December.
Yeah, the budget committee hosts that.
Wish I paid more attention when I was younger.
No, no.
Okay, um, so I think, um, so we'll leave the reserve funds as they are for now. And I think, you know, I think the key is, is if you, if you put it on the ballot, um, you give them the tax impact, you let the town decide if they wanna spend that money, you know?
I like that, actually.
Um, and then, um, you also.
Kind of a reality check.
It is, yep, you also explain to them, like, for example, for some of the reserve funds, you tell them, all right, here's what we have put away for these funds, you know? So they have the ability to, to make an informed decision. Um, and I think it's also important, you know, when we describe the changes in the operating budget, that we're clear, um, in the voter's guide about what the impacts are there. All right, so, I don't know necessarily that, um, we need to have another full, um, budget workshop, but I think at some point we have to make a decision on the reserve funds. Um, and then we have a couple outliers, um, I'll summarize what's outliers this time.
I think we should have, like, an hour meeting on it, sometime probably.
Yeah, the week.
Fall, public hearing, fall, we do the public hearing, like, I don't know if we wanna do like Thursday or Wednesday.
Yeah, during that, during that week.
Well, so we have budget committee on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Um, we have to do, I think it's water, so the town, um, at that one, so.
Yeah, we wanna get it done that week.
We could do it Saturday too, I'm not adverse to doing a Saturday.
I'm not adverse to doing Saturdays around, puzzle around.
Or even a Sunday.
He doesn't like Sunday.
So you gotta go to church.
I do that.
He's got church, so Saturday.
We'll figure out, we, we, we don't, we can figure out, we're not here next week.
I'm not.
Do you wanna make a date, figure out a date for when final?
Yep.
And do you wanna do it the sixteenth, which is, I think, a Tuesday?
Um.
Uh, if you wanna have meetings Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so that's, up to you guys.
So we could do, um, so we could do the fifteenth, we could, um, piggyback on the public hearing.
All right.
Cause Joe's gonna come in.
We're gonna do the SIP then.
It won't be that long, a couple hours, of course, yeah.
And if it does, oh, we, we have to notify people, so we have to put it down, right?
Yeah, we'll put a budget workshop and a public hearing.
What I'm saying, if we don't get it done, then do we, should we put a backup in for, can we put a backup and cancel it? Why don't we put in one for Tuesday too, and then cancel it, if we're all set?
For the next Tuesday?
No, the, yeah, the.
The sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
Okay.
You know, I'm just saying, if.
Yeah, I got you.
We don't know how the public hearing's gonna go, we don't, I'm assuming it's gonna be quick, but.
You don't wanna do Saturday, but thirteenth.
I don't care, I'm fine with that.
Maybe fine.
Will you, will you be around, Paul?
I should be, like I said, I don't get, I never get called.
Well, it's not, it's not species, so I'm, I'm here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'll be around, so, thirteen's fine, like nine o'clock in the morning is on the day.
Yeah.
Ten, nine, so yeah.
Let's do that, and then, um, maybe we'll be able to just be done on the fifteenth with Joe and.
Well, that's right, if we do it on the thirteenth, we could take our time and get it done.
All right, so we, we're good about, are we pretty much good about budget, cause there's one other thing we're just gonna bring up.
I think we're good for budget, yeah.
So Alan, Alan's email. Alan Gould's email, and, and the fact that, so something he's wanna discuss with you, who do you guys think is, has got some checks, see if he wants more hours. I don't want to get us.
He, he does, he does.
Yeah, we, we kind of.
I think everybody's had individual discussions.
So he would be interested in taking on more hours.
He would.
He'd go the full time.
Um.
And then my other thought process is, just think about this, we may contemplate it, maybe we talk about it Monday. Is the position we felt it would be more something like administrative assistant?
Um, so my thought about this is, based on the feedback from MRI, is they are, they think we could do with a, a part-time TA.
Yeah, but I'm saying not even, not even necessarily town administrator, but more of a.
Well, we need, we need people to do things like ARPA, and, you know, there are some high-level projects, I think, um, that.
Human resource.
That interest you.
Um, right, right, so there are some high-level things, but, so my thought about it is personally, we could do potentially a part-time TA, maybe sixteen to twenty hours. Um, we could, Chuck is willing to take on all of the, the financials.
Hmm.
Um, he could be full-time, we could take the administrative stuff off, and I've talked to him about it. He thinks that we could get away with maybe six hours for an admin, for the admin work. Um.
I think that's what we should do.
So do we, do we, do we recruit still through?
So I wanted to.
Do we still recruit through them with, for a part-time, sixteen, twenty hours a week, and would their funds go down, and you still pay them like three grand for a search, or?
Uh, no, I think we should, should still do that.
Yeah.
Um, I think we should try to use their services if we can.
All right.
Um, because on that, you know, we need to come up with another job description and.
So we wanna blow that tonight, you wanna blow that Monday? We're already blowing them, we're already, we're already having them all searching right now.
So, well, we already, we already have the contract with them, we just have to decide if we wanna proceed with the recruiting. Um, I actually think that we might consider, they offered some, um, some financial consulting. We might consider, um, their op, offer of that, um, to help us with some of the unknown budget questions we have. Um, just to kind of firm up, um, you know, things like tax impact. I, I think that's my concern is, and then offsetting, offsetting.
We use them as a consultant, and just limited hours.
Yeah, it's like a four-hour type, four-hour type thing.
Well, we, we give an assignment, like.
Well, just an.
Well, I'm just saying, call and talk, cause we're gonna need to set the, I mean, we're gonna need to set that for the next couple weeks for that job.
What sample?
In the next month, we're gonna set, at this time.
Yep. Um, so I think, you know, we engage with them for some financial consulting, but, and we use them for recruiting, um, can you just come to?
Part-time?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
You feel better at the head of the table?
No, I got all these checks sitting here.
Um, so, so I was thinking.
Do we feel comfortable crafting the warrants on our own, or should we use them for that?
Um, I think I think that is what, what we have, like, to go on, so I feel like I can do it if I had a good kind of basis, but, um, and it's gonna be approved by DRA.
And I also think that we could, we, um, I was saying, I was thinking of the upper and warrants, you know?
But I think municipal association would also help you.
Um, so quickly, before we're average, can I just run some numbers for you guys?
Yep, New Hampshire.
So I looked at, um, the average, um, salary for a TA, and this, and it was an article that I found here. Um, and they are saying that in New Hampshire, an average TA median is around seventy-five thousand, so I figured out.
That's full-time, right?
Full-time.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I figured out, if we, if we did a part-time TA, and we budgeted about, well, if you do sixteen to twenty hours, it's around forty thousand, but if we budgeted, because there are, is demand, forty-five.
Yeah.
And then we made Chuck full-time.
And we get out Chuck's salary and his hour, right?
Yeah, and we bumped it to say, and I just came up with a certain rough number, and this is open for discussion. And we considered, um, a part-time, like a six-hour admin, unless we can get a volunteer, of course. Um, we could stay within what we have proposed, safely proposed for the executive line as it stands now.
Sure.
So right now, the executive line is, um, a hundred and six. But if you, if you did a part-time TA, full-time Chuck, um, with an increase for Chuck, for his, um, taking on all of the financial responsibility and the extra day, um, I think we're still safe in what had been proposed for twenty twenty-two. Um, so we don't necessarily have to be overly concerned about, uh, planning for an additional cost for a new TA.
I like it, I think that's a good idea, and.
I think it gives us everything we want.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
The only key's gonna be as far as the person.
Right.
That can be part-time and helpful, and be able to hopefully guide through paperwork, but you never know, I mean.
Yeah, so, so.
Probably candidate others in for part-time, don't just get experienced.
Well, and like Mike said, there are some retired military folks.
Yeah.
Um, and so, and so I, that's why I think it's important to kind of work with them, if we tend to help with recruiting, because they have some avenues that might be useful.
When I called, was it Cook's that had the transportation? The town was that I called for, seeing Jay, and we, one other town?
London Dairy.
London Dairy, thank you, when I called London Dairy, I was talking to the part-time town administrator.
Yep, oh, you did, you did.
Who was town administrator for a bunch of years.
Yep.
But decided to have less of a work role, so she was the assistant town administrator, but the town administrator was only like a year or two, so the person who knew everything was the assistant town administrator. So I'm just saying, if you can find someone that's looking for a position, hey, I, I downed my jaw, now that's a perfect example.
You need somebody that can do the high-level stuff, because Chuck can manage the financial aspect of it.
Right.
You know, and I think that's a good combination for us.
And that's, that's what MRI said, really, you know, they think that Chuck is competent enough that he could do all the financial part, and that is probably our biggest need. Um, and in fact, they actually recommend that we might want even table our search for a TA, but I still feel like we do need a TA.
No, I, I, I do too, and I, you know, I talked to Chuck and.
Yeah.
And he basically said, hey, I can do the financials, I don't wanna do the HR part, and I don't wanna be the interface to the public. You know?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what the TA needs to be, see, the interface of the public, and we need someone that.
Pretty set off, if they can be that.
So I agree.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so we continue, we continue.
It actually helps us clarify it, rather than go through the process with whatever.
Right.
So we continue along with, with MRI to.
Yep, I do wanna go back.
Work for a part-time assistant.
Yeah. Well, so.
We gotta, we should talk to Chuck, so Chuck, is there anything, is only, can we talk to Chuck, I think we just have to appropriate.
Well, so, um, no, we do, I asked Chuck to put together what it looks like if he was doing all the finances to describe the job, so he's putting that together. Um, so basically, it would be everything, including the DRA portal, so he's gonna, um.
And he feels comfortable, he knows it, but he can learn it, also.
Um, so I think that's really the thing, the only thing that he isn't real, um, knowledgeable, complete as knowledgeable as he feels he should be about is the DRA portal. Um, but other than that, he felt comfortable. So he's putting it.
But he's been in there and done things.
His email, his email, the other day was pretty, pretty informative too, and he, I can tell by reading his emails, he's got a handle and so on, so good.
You know, you can, you can tell that he's very interested, because, uh, I, I texted him about getting the name of the insurance company and the agent, because I was gonna call him, and he followed up on it, though.
Yep.
And that's the email we get back.
Um, so is that, so if we are, um, planning to do that, what I'd like to do is go back through the job description that MRI put together, cause I think it's very light.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of look at what Caroline gave us for the transition, and make sure that the high-level problems are covered in the job description. Um, and also that we talk about HR coverage, and then potentially welfare as well. Um, Chuck would be backup welfare, he said, um, but he would want the TA to be.
Yep, I got that, that makes sense.
Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll try to work with MRI, I'll shore up that job description a little bit more, based around what we have for current project list.
Okay.
Sound good?
Have you reached out to them at all?
Um, last week I told Alan we would review the job description, and then we would circle back with him after we talked a little bit. All right, good, anything else?
I got one, very simple, easy thing, we got a, uh, an email from Denise Knowles.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I did see.
And she's looking for permission to put a thank you from the Family Day Committee sign, uh, in the town property in Silver Street.
Yeah, that's no problem, I'm, I'm okay.
I thought we all approved it, so.
That's fine.
So we might have to make a motion for that, huh?
No, as long as all three of us are clear.
Okay, fine.
We're all filing, right?
All right.
One other thing we do, actually, because we're getting, it's getting late, we're in, we have to make a decision on the compressor before the end of the year, on the generator, sorry, generator.
Yes, and I've talked to John about that.
Okay, um, so, yes, go ahead.
And he, I, I forget the name, but he's got one that he recommends and that, uh.
Tell me you use them before.
Sean recommends, and that we've used before, and it's like twenty thousand dollars less than the other proposal.
Um, I looked at.
It's like twenty-five thousand, I think it's.
What's the total?
Yeah.
What's the total? Hundred thousand.
Here, it's this one, Paul, um, well, the one that's not in there is Moriarty.
What?
Um, but, so this is the Moriarty one.
Yeah, I've seen this, it's cool.
This, um, like.
It was, oh, one of the.
No, my, my battery shut down. Um. So what I don't, the only thing, that's. Oh, with a new cooler, okay.
And, and Sean was there also, and Sean told me that that's a much better.
Uh, the Generac?
Yes, he said Kolar is a much better product.
Mm-hmm. Especially for this, you're talking for this building, yes.
Yeah.
What is a Generac and what?
Thirty kilowatt.
Kolar.
Yeah.
He said Kolar is much better, and it, it's less, lot less.
So that's surprising.
Twenty thousand dollars less, huh?
What, by the way, go.
No, well, it's sixteen less, but the sizing is different.
Yeah, but the size is fine, they said.
Okay, well, that was, so, um, on the Moriarty one, it was a, um, a thirty-six kilowatt versus a thirty.
Right.
And then it also includes a transfer switch, um, for seventy-six hundred.
Those guys looked at both of them pretty, well, Sean did, and.
Okay.
I, I was with Sean and John the other day.
Okay. Um, and we've used them before?
Yes, they got a very good reputation.
Okay, I'm fine with it then. Um, as long as the sizing is right, I think, cause I did talk to Mark about this, and, um, he felt that, that this sizing was a little bit of a forward thinking, you know, if for some reason the needs of the building changed, it, this would support it, but if we're comfortable with that this sizing meets the current needs and maybe even future needs a bit, then I'm fine with, um, the proposal from generator connection.
Oh, that's who's coming to our house.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Forty, forty-five grand, right?
For probably as much as it's gonna get used, um.
It's forty-five grand, right?
No, no, no.
Oh.
Twenty-one nine.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, let's just do it then, um, so I'll make a motion, um, to move forward with the proposal from generator connection, um, to replace the generator for a twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll second that. All okay?
Aye.
That's, that's the Kolar one, right?
Yes.
That's the Kolar, bless you.
All right, good, let's, all right, um, and I think that's all I have for. Want you to do a jury?
Uh, we can have to do a joint, do we have anybody on there we have to talk to, or not?
Uh, it's gone.
Okay, good.